This is the one-minute warning. We'll go ahead and get started in a minute. You're like on outer darkness out there. Okay, I'll call to order the regular council meeting of January 5th, 2021. I'm just glad I don't have to say 2020 anymore. The Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be led by Councilmember Yentes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America.
Thank you. And our invocation tonight will be by Burt Mall. Burt, we missed you last time. I'm glad you're back.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, and the members of the Gilbert Town Council. I appreciate your forgiving me for failing to arrive on time last month. And I appreciate Julia, their graciousness, and inviting me to open this year's business with the invocation.
Thank you.
So if we could bow together. Heavenly Father, you are the Lord God, the Creator of the ends of the earth. You do not become weary or tired. Your understanding is inscrutable. You give strength to the weary, and to him who lacks might, you increase power. Though youths grow weary and young men and women stumble badly, yet those who hope for you will gain new strength. They will mount up with wings like eagles. They will run and not become weary. They will walk and not faint. And Lord God, as we look back on 2020, Lord God, for this body, it was a difficult year. It was a difficult year for all of us, Lord. This body had to grapple with some difficult issues. They had to grapple with health concerns, budgetary constraints, and a myriad of other issues. And Lord, as they look into, or as they begin 2021, Lord, I pray that you would give them renewed strength, renewed hope, and a recognition, God, that you are their strength and hope. And Lord God, that when they feel weary, you'd remind them that you are their hope and strength. And Lord, I also pray that you would give them wisdom and grant them discernment as they consider the town matters that come before them. Lord God, some of the decisions they'll be making, and many of the decisions will be weighty decisions that affect our citizens, our residents. And I pray that you would give them the strength to make the weighty decisions and not shrink from those decisions to ensure the welfare of our community. Lord God, pray for peace and prosperity for our community. Lord, at a time when there has been so much division in our nation, I pray for unity and objectives and purpose for this body. I pray that truth and integrity will prevail in all matters. And when an error is made, Lord God, that it would be acknowledged in a spirit of humility, that we would all learn from it and continue to move forward with a spirit of optimism and hope for the future. Lord God, I also pray for a spirit of cooperation, that this year would be a productive year for this body and our community as a whole. And Lord, we'd be remiss if we did not remember those that are on the front lines, the public servants who give of themselves every day, for healthcare workers, for the doctors, nurses, technicians, healthcare providers, who have given so much over this past year and have really made, many have made the ultimate sacrifice and have succumbed to this awful pandemic that swept our nation. We pray, Lord, for strength for them and continued rest as they enter into 2021, that you would be their hope and strength as well and keep them safe from illness. And Lord God, for our public safety personnel and fire personnel. Lord, they are out there every day putting their lives on the line to ensure safety of our residents and our community. We pray for them, Lord, as we've seen violence sweep through some of our cities in our nation this last year. We just ask for your hedge of protection over our community and our fire and police and public safety personnel, Lord God, that you would keep them safe and protect them. And Lord, we also pray for our men and women of uniform in all the branches of the military. Lord, for those that are from our community and throughout our nation, Lord, they've, many are away from their family and serving days and months separated from their families. We pray for their families, and we pray that you would protect the families and assure them of the return of their loved ones and protect our military. And Lord, we also pray for national, state, and local government officials, for our newly-elected mayor and for the newly-elected council members, and for this body, Lord, that you would just, again, give them wisdom. I pray for the hearts of all men and women, Lord, that you would bring a supernatural spiritual awakening and healing to our nation at a time that is so greatly needed, a moving of your Spirit. And lastly, Lord, we acknowledge that our accomplishments and the accomplishments of this body is not by power or by might, but through the Spirit of the living God. We ask for your favor, Lord, not because we deserve it, but because of your goodness, mercy, and grace. And Lord, I ask that you would guide your people and guide this body. And Lord, that you would give them an extra measure of your grace, mercy, and kindness as they carry out the tasks before them this year. We pray these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Burt.
Thank you.
A roll call?
Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks. Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke. And Councilmember Amy Yentis.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We have no presentations or proclamations. We do have something in the way of a proclamation that we'll take care of later in the meeting. Communications from citizens.
We have three citizens wishing to speak tonight. The communications from citizens portion on the agenda provides our citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government that are not on the printed agenda. Under the provisions of Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council will not be able to respond beyond thanking you for your comments. All the speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. I'm going to call out the speaker's name. We have one in person and two via WebEx. Please come forward or begin speaking. First, state your name and place of residence. Our first citizen is Omar Hamid.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, fellow council members. My name is Omar Hamid. I've been living in Gilbert for the last 20 years. And with me is my neighbor Victor McCleve. Victor's been in Gilbert for how many years?
Seventy-four.
Okay. All right. I'm here, or we are here tonight to speak about a plan to repair a sewer line that runs from Lindsay Road to Neely Street. The property owners located on Honeysuckle and Commerce Street are willing to grant the town permission to access our properties for the purpose of repairing the sewer line. In exchange, we would like the town of Gilbert to sign an agreement not to acquire part of the properties on the sewer line. Instead, the town of Gilbert informing us has gone and used our taxpayer funds to hire Jacobs Engineering, which is trying to secure property rights for the sewer line. So my call to action tonight is, we've been here for a long, long time. We're requesting that the town council and Jason Montgomery to have a meeting with all the property owners that are affected by this and come to a viable, amicable solution that makes everybody happy. We want to continue to stay in Gilbert. I'll let Mr. McCleve say something if he wants.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, council. I thought Omar was going to take care of this by himself, so I apologize.
We're next-door neighbors.
Please speak into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But anyway, Mr. Mayor, we have a situation that I have done some research, spoken with some people from the town, and with other things that have taken place with that property that is involved in this in the past. And I believe without any question that we can accomplish what the town would like to accomplish without having to do this, the acquisition, the way it's being presented to us at this time. And we spoke earlier, and before the town spends a lot of money, and before we spend, which we're concerned about, a lot of money, we would like to see if there's a way that we could accomplish without a fight between the neighbors. And we've spoken with quite a few of the people that are affected by this. And I believe without, there is no one that I have spoken with that will not object to it. So if we could work something out between the town and the homeowners, I believe, as in the past, if you recall, Mr. Mayor, in the past, when there's problems, some of the same people's involved. And they've always come up and did what the town, and accomplished what the town wanted to accomplish. And we have always done it without any fight, let's say, just with discussion. And I believe it's possible to do the same thing again. And before we let this get out of hand, where we're fighting each other, we'd like to have an opportunity to try to work out so we get what we can live with and the town gets what they need. And that's basically all we're asking for. And I don't know anything else to say. I understand you can't comment.
Thank you for your comments.
But thank you very much for the opportunity. You have anything else? But I believe this is a workable situation if the town will be willing to meet with us. But thank you very much. Mr. Stewart had a problem, and remember, Mr. Anderson, he solved the problem by sitting down with us. So I think we can do the same thing now.
Yeah, I think we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Omar and Victor. We'll move to Stacy Adams via WebEx. Please state your name and place of residence. Ms. Adams?
Sorry, I'm here. I'm sorry, I think my line was still muted. Thank you so much, Mayor Anderson, Mayor Lake Peterson, town council members, town employees, neighbors, and lovers of the town of Gilbert. It is said that fences make good neighbors. I come to you tonight in regards to Project WW1060, as you voted on during the November 10th Public Hearing Item Number 28 and Consent Calendar Item Number 4. My husband and I purchased our forever home on East Commerce Avenue in Casey Ranch 2 in April of 2012, and we absolutely love our pie-shaped parcel. We have, over the last eight years, granted access to our property, oftentimes immediate, without advance warning, three times to town workers, wastewater workers, and town subcontractors, three times, happily, readily, without quibble. So imagine our shock when we received the notification on the week of Christmas from a company named Jacobs Engineering that the town wants to service the sewer line and must purchase the land that the sewer line is in from us. We were shocked and confused. This seemed like a huge waste of taxpayer dollars, especially when we have dutifully allowed uninterrupted access to the manhole cover in our backyard when needed, one time for two weeks straight. The last information we were given two years ago was from Ken Snow, who was then the program manager of the wastewater projects, stating that an additional man gate was going to be installed by the city to allow access to the manhole. Even that seemed like a waste of taxpayer dollars as we already had a man gate accessible by the workers and any town contractors needing to access that manhole. Again, that was two years ago, and the last that we heard on the topic. Now, the project manager, Jason Montgomery, has met with several of my neighbors, two of which you've seen in person tonight, and has explained that they will be sleeving the pipe to get another 50 years out of it. Why now? With half of the remaining life still available, why now? We will grant access, and so will the other homeowners on Commerce Avenue and the other two streets affected by this project, like we have always done when it comes to working with the town of Gilbert. The question remains, why must the town purchase our property? What information were you given as council members provided to arrive at the decision that the only way to achieve success is to take our land away through the eminent domain process? Especially from my neighbors that don't even have a manhole cover in their property. We ask that you request further due diligence on this matter and that the full report back to you be provided before spending needless taxpayer dollars. It is your fiduciary responsibility to justify this spend when there are 24 taxpayers, again, only six with manholes, that are willing to grant access, even extended access, saving the town millions. This sounds like a reasonable request before flippantly agreeing to take away land from 24 hard-working, tax-paying town of Gilbert citizens that you are charged to represent. They say fences make good neighbors, but fences with man gates that allow for town workers and contractors to access make the happiest town constituents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you, Stacy. Our next speaker is via WebEx, Victoria Schaefer. Please state your name and place of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Victoria Schaefer, and I'm a resident at 261 East Hemlock Avenue. I am a very new resident of Gilbert. I too bought my forever home here and purchased it only eight months ago. Along with Stacy and the other members that you've spoken to, we have all been in contact with the Jacobs Foundation and with Jason Montgomery about the project that you folks have set forth. And in speaking to them, have learned that, as Stacy said, the refurbishment of the sewer line will be done internally, and that access to all of our properties is not even going to be necessary. There will be no digging on our properties. There will be no site examinations on our property. The entire repair of that line, whenever it needs to be done, can be accessed through the manholes and the covers. And so access to our property is completely unnecessary. We've also been made aware that there's another line there that may, at some point in the future, be in need of repair. And have also been told that that one can be repaired in the same way. So again, no need to dig up our properties or acquire them in any way, shape, or form. I bought my forever home because of the size of the property, without any knowledge of the easement for the sewer being explained to me in any of my documents or by any of my Wilters or other representatives. I have just undergone an extensive renovation in my backyard that I would completely lose my money for. I am now upside down in my forever home. And I'm a single woman who paid for this all by myself. I cannot afford to lose this property. I cannot afford to lose the land. And so as all of my neighbors have stated, we have already been made aware that there are options for these projects, that the need to acquire our actual land is not necessary. And so we ask you, please, work with us. As Stacy stated, we would be happy to grant access if access is needed, but the necessity of taking our land just doesn't seem accurate. It doesn't seem possible. So we know that there's other remedies to this, and we'd just like to figure them out and going forward, not have a fight on our hands. We want to live peacefully in Gilbert in our forever homes. And so please take all of the residents who live along the north side of the canal, please take our consideration and our feelings into your consideration. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Victoria. That concludes the communication from citizens. We'll move to the consent calendar. We'll be pulling Item 15A from the consent calendar. Are there any other items that any council members wish to pull? Okay. There are no other items to be pulled. So may I have a motion to approve Items 1 through 15 and Item 16?
I move to approve those items, Vice Mayor.
Second. Please vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Tilke?
Aye.
That passes 7-0. We'll move to Item 15A, Mayor Anderson.
Thank you. Item 15A is a consider of adoption of a resolution implementing a temporary amendment to the personnel rules providing continued use of COVID sick leave beginning January 1st. I put this item on the agenda tonight to give the council an opportunity to discuss and take any action that we'd like. I had originally done this as amendment to the original proclamation, and I want to make sure that we have sufficient discussion amongst the council and also ratification by the council. What I'd like to do at this point is give Patrick the opportunity to do a summary of what is contained in this amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I've got Nathan Williams, who is our head of the people team, who has a short presentation to walk you, provide you with an overview of this. And then we're happy to answer any questions you may have about the matter prior to taking a vote. So Judy, if we could bring Nathan up and share his presentation. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. As a trainer by trade, I hate to have difficulties with presentations. So Mayor Anderson, members of council, members of the community, I appreciate the moment to share here. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I'll take you through a brief presentation just to explain a little of the history behind the CARES Act, which led to our COVID sick leave program, and then obviously the request for extension into 2021. So first and foremost, a little bit of history. You know, in an effort to reduce the spread of the virus, we rolled out a number of protocols as soon as we were made aware by the CDC of the risk of COVID-19 and how the virus would spread. This was done back in March. And obviously, the intent here was to ensure continuity of operations of all of our lines of service. And we were very effective at doing that and had a very successful year as far as services provided to our community in 2020, in lieu of everything that was going on. Along with that, as I'm sure you all know, Congress passed the CARES Act back in, it took effect April 1st of 2020, and it mandated a number of employers, including government entities, to provide up to 80 hours of sick leave that was paid by the organization in certain situations related to COVID-19 exposure, quarantine, or spread that may affect town employees. So we did this, of course, and this program, the CARES Act, it basically was moonlighted or expired on December 31st, and Congress did not act to continue it on into 2021. So our approach that differs quite a bit from a lot of the municipalities around us, we did a little bit of research and reached out to a number of municipalities in the region. And many of them, they took the course of action of doing what we would call a front-loaded add to their leave bank. So they put an additional 80 hours of sick leave in all of their employees' leave accrual banks. We felt that this was not the most conservative or fiscally responsible approach because it puts you in a position of potentially having to pay out that leave in a case of retirement or potentially carry over that leave without intending to. So had we done that, which again, let me make clear, we did not, but had we done that, you can see on the slide here, with about 1,350 eligible employees, that would have been about 108,000 hours added to sick leave banks. We made an as-approved decision to only provide those up to 80-hour equivalent leave hours when requests and documentation were provided. And as a result of that, the total number of employees to date that have used any amount of COVID sick leave are about 297, for a total COVID sick hours used town-wide of just over 16,000. So that is less than 15% of the possible leave that would have been used or would have been banked had we gone with that front-loading approach. Now, kind of where we are today, just like you're seeing in the state, just like you're seeing in the county, just like you're seeing across the country, we are seeing a significant increase in positive COVID cases. And just to give you some perspective, if you look at, I wanted to kind of highlight public safety because our first responders, unfortunately, are oftentimes the victims of this the most because of the nature of their work and the fact that they're out there in the field and they are working with sick individuals or potentially infected individuals. And so public safety, as an example, from December 1st until today, has seen 68 new positive COVID cases. The total number of positive COVID cases they've seen since back in April is 129. So just in the last 36 days, 53% of their positive cases have occurred. Townwide, similarly, December 1st until today, we've seen 87 total positive cases, and that is 51% of all positive cases that we've seen since this pandemic began. So, you know, it's hard to provide financial impact data, obviously. So, you know, it's hard to provide financial impact data, obviously, in this case because we don't know what the future holds in the case of a pandemic, in the case of spread. What we do know is that a failure to extend the COVID sick leave option could cause some employees, especially those who have minimal leave banks available, you know, maybe they're new employees, maybe they've been here less time, maybe they've had, you know, health issues in the past or whatever the case may be. Those employees may feel they have to come to work while sick or infected, especially if they are maybe asymptomatic and while test positive. And this could put members of staff, as well as members of our community, at risk. There's also the component, I thought I would just mention, you know, we are now self-funded for our workers' compensation program. And if we remove the COVID sick leave, this will likely lead to an increase in work comp claims. And every claim, we pay $1,000 to initiate every claim, even if that claim is denied. So there are some substantial costs associated with not carrying over this leave program into the year ahead. So that is all the data I've got on hand, but I've got plenty that I can share, plenty that I can talk about if you've got questions for me.
Are there any further comments from council?
I just had a question, Nathan. Is this through the end of 2021 or is there a specific sunset on this policy?
I will, sorry, I thought I heard a gasp as if somebody was starting to talk. Councilmember Yentes, thank you for that question. We do not anticipate it being through the end of the calendar year. We did not put a date because we cannot, you know, predict the future, but we anticipate a phasing out of COVID sick leave as the vaccine becomes more readily available. And we see wider access and vision of the vaccine. So we anticipate, whatever that date is, whatever that end date that we may set, we anticipate that the use of COVID leave will become less and less and less over the upcoming months. We anticipate, unfortunately, that January will likely be one of the worst months for the pandemic in the town, as well as probably within the state and county. But then we anticipate that it will begin to trail downward. And then I think the resolution states that town manager has the right to cancel or moonlight that resolution when needed.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Yentes, the intention would be as soon as we start to see wider deployment of the vaccine and a drop in positive cases, especially amongst our personnel who are still working out in the field, public safety in particular, as well as parks and public works, that we could then start to wind this program down and close it out.
Any other comments? All right. We have a motion to approve.
Vice Mayor.
Yes. Go ahead. Councilmember Taylor?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me comment on this. And Mayor, thank you for bringing this forward for council. I think it's very appropriate that we have a chance to weigh in on this. The question I had on this is, are we able to fund this through CARES Act money? And then to the extent that the CARES Act money is available, and this is, you know, what council deems as purpose, perhaps that's your end date when the CARES Act funds is not available. But is this an eligible expense for CARES Act funds that the town has received?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor. Yes, it would be if the council chose to apply some of those dollars to these expenses. At one time, initially, the federal government had made funds available to reimburse employers who were required to provide this sick leave. They then changed that, that they would not reimburse public sector employers for that. But we did receive CARES dollars through the governor's office, which the CARES Subcommittee has allocated in various ways. And this would be an expense that they could use some of those CARES dollars to reimburse for.
Thank you, Patrick. I appreciate that. Mayor, if that's something that we can count on, I'd certainly support this. And I appreciate you allowing us to have some discussion on that. But I think that would be an appropriate use of the funds there. Thank you.
Mayor, and if I might add, I believe we'll probably be scheduling a Subcommittee soon, so perhaps we can take that to the Subcommittee for consideration.
That's a great idea.
Excellent. We have approval for, or a motion to approve item 15A as presented.
Aye.
We need a motion first for 15A. So moved. Do we have a second?
I second that, this county.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
That item passes and we'll have that placed on the agenda for the future Subcommittee's. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, we have two items on public hearing. Item number 18 has been withdrawn for consideration by the applicant, so we don't need to take any action on item 18. That leaves us item 17. I'll open the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve item 17.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Aye.
Thank you. That leads us to item 19, council administration. Jared, you're sounding a little gravelly there. Item 19 is adoption of a resolution of appreciation for Councilmember Jared Taylor. Would you mind if I read this?
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Whereas Jared Taylor has served as a council member since January 2013, including serving as Vice Mayor in 2016, and whereas Jared Taylor has served with honor and distinction throughout his tenure, and whereas his influence has always been exercised with utmost concern that the cares and concerns of stakeholders were carefully considered before a decision was reached. And whereas Jared Taylor served as council liaison to numerous boards and commissions, including the Gilbert Self-Inured Trust Fund for Health Insurance Benefits, the Public Facilities and Water Resources Municipal Property Corporations, the Citizens Budget Committee, and as an ambassador to the Chandler Unified School District and Valley Metro Public Transit Authority, providing a crucial link between citizen advisory boards and the council. And whereas Jared Taylor has improved the public dialogue with his thorough research and thoughtful questions and has been a polite and passionate advocate for sustainable government. And whereas he has carried out the duties of public office, honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and courageous leadership, now therefore yet resolved at the town council, on behalf of the citizens of the town of Gilbert, he'll hereby express sincere appreciation to Jared Taylor for his service to the town as a member of the town council. Thank you, Jared, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Those are very kind words.
I'd like to give you the time, if you'd like to express any sentiments yourself.
Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of thoughts here. I guess it's appropriate that I'm here in my chair. This is a chair that I prepped for many council meetings over the last eight years. And I'll have a lot of memories and appreciate everything about those last eight years. I'm sorry I can't be with you tonight. But I would like to just thank those who I've been able to work with over the last eight years, both on staff and both on council. There's been a lot that we've accomplished. My purpose when I ran for town council was to make Gilbert the best place to grow business and raise a family. And of course, this is a team effort in so many ways. But it's so wonderful to see the awards roll in virtually every month to show how these goals have been met. And so it's been fun to be a very small part in accomplishing those goals for our small businesses and our families here in Gilbert. I've asked, excuse me, I've asked staff and Mayor Anderson not to spend any money on gifts. The town has been very, very generous already in many ways. And I just hope that any money that would have been spent on me can be deferred over to the Parks and Rec Department to plant a few trees in the shade program. There's so much that we can benefit of the rest of the citizens by in the shade in their parks. And Patrick, thanks for that agenda item tonight. Public service in any form is a tremendous honor, and I appreciate all the Gilbert citizens who've supported me over the last eight years. And at least as of right now, I'm not dead, and I'm across the street. So if there's any way that I can be of service to the town council or to staff in the future, please don't hesitate to call or ask. I'm happy to help. Thanks to each of you. God bless each of you and your good families. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jared, for your service and for your friendship. Greatly appreciated. With council's permission, since this is an administrative item, I want to have someone who wants to participate in this roast tonight come up and speak. Eddie Cook? Eddie didn't want you to get away without some words of encouragement, Jared.
No, that's great.
Well, Councilmember Taylor, I was really going to roast you, but you're not here. So anyways, what I wanted to do was just share my sincere appreciation and respect. When I met Jared, probably, I'm going to say maybe 12 years ago or so, there was another gentleman that was running for council that I was supporting, and he didn't make the council. But I got to meet Jared through that journey. And I got to meet a lot of very wonderful, wonderful individuals in our community that, as Jared said, you know, he wants to support our families and our businesses. And Jared was very instrumental in a lot of my formation as it relates to the political world of serving. And that was very inspirational for me even to run. And we spent together many times, working on, you know, what was right for our community and doing what was right. And I just want to express my sincere thanks for Jared for participating in that process because serving in the public square takes a lot of courage, a lot of humility, and a lot of listening. And Jared brings a lot to that. But the things that Jared really brought, which I really appreciate because both of us came from large corporations, and not many people will remember or recall, but Jared was very much instrumental in bringing in Six Sigma Lite. And Six Sigma was probably some of the greatest business efficiency practices that big corporations provide. And Jared was very, very much wanting Patrick and his team to adopt a lot of those Six Sigma Lite programs. And a lot of it has been done, from our zero-based, party-based budgeting and a lot of consolidation of different processes into, you know, more effective and business efficiencies. And, you know, Jared was very much pushing for a lot of that. And I've been really grateful for that. Jared talks about the parks and the shade. And, you know, both of us have lost more hair probably over the last decade or so. So shade is really important. That's why the cowboy hat a lot, right? To protect my, you know, my scalp from the sun. But Jared, I just want to thank you, but I do want to thank your wife and your children for allowing you to serve because it does take a lot of sacrifice from each of us to serve our public in this capacity. So give your wife a big hug from the Cook family and a hug to your kids because without their support, you can't fulfill the role that you have been doing. You'll be missed. I look forward to our lunches from time to time when you recover from the COVID that you're doing. But again, thank you very much for the years of allowing me to serve with you, and I look forward to continuing to serve at other capacities with you. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Eddie, for those kind words. Please give Jenny my best. We'll talk soon.
You know, I think we still owe Eddie and Jordan a basketball game, don't we, Jared?
Yeah, they're scared of what the outcome might be. And Councilmember September, we still have a pickleball challenge.
Yes, we do. Yeah. Any other council members like to say a word?
If I might, Mayor. I appreciate just a second to express my gratitude to Councilman Yentes. Hello. Councilmember Taylor, it's really been an honor and privilege. I know it's only been two years, but, you know, being able to stand shoulder to shoulder with you. And I think you've really been a stalwart, constant advocate for taxpayers. That's always, you know, in the center of the decisions that you make and the input that you bring to the table. And very grateful for your thoughtful leadership and just how you consistently always remain patient and humble and gracious and earnest and professional. And you really have set a great example for public service. And just thank you for all your time and service to the town of Gilbert.
Thank you, Amy.
Councilmember September?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Taylor, you know, we've been neighbors for almost 15 years. And you were really a big inspiration for me to pursue this opportunity to serve the town of Gilbert. And I appreciate that. And it's been fantastic getting to work with you. I want to thank you for helping me navigate my way through this, especially early on. This was a particularly difficult year, and we had a lot of conversations and I had a lot of questions, and thank you for answering them. I will never forget your thoughtful and articulate explanation of your position on so many matters. And I've stood on the other side of this dais. I've been in front of the podium for many years, in front of many councils. And you stand out as somebody who just did a very extraordinary job, and you were always very calm in your demeanor. And it's something that I hope to achieve as I continue my service here with Gilbert. I want to thank your family for letting you serve. And I want to thank you for your service and contributions to the town of Gilbert. And just because you're not on council doesn't mean that the pickleball challenge doesn't still stand. So that's still out there, and we can do that at the new regional park as soon as we're cleared to do that. Thank you.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
Can we do that as doubles? Yeah, all right. Great.
Bring you, Jay.
All right. We also, we have some delicious cake. I wish you were here, Jared, and we have some delicious cake that you could partake of with us. My thoughts, I've worked very closely with you over the years, and I feel very strongly, just as the others do, about the strength that you brought to the council and especially to me and for the opportunity to rub shoulders with you and get the different perspective on lots of things has been very valuable to me over the years. And I know my wife has greatly appreciated you also over the years and working with you and working with the schools. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Patrick, do you want to say something?
Yeah, Mayor, on behalf of myself and the staff, a couple of comments. First, I would not advise playing basketball with Jared. Several years ago, when Mayor Lewis was here, I was roped into playing 4:00 a.m. basketball games with Councilmember Taylor and Mayor Lewis. And I can tell you, if you try to drive the center on them, you will incur a few elbows from them. So pickleball may be a better sport to engage Councilman Taylor into. But those were fun games. Next, let me say on behalf of all the staff and myself, Jared, I lost sight that it was eight years. It went very quick, and we've covered and accomplished a lot of things over eight years. And we appreciate that you always brought your perspective and were honest with us about your feelings and your approach and challenged us to find better ways, more efficient ways. And we always knew to make sure we dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's when we were bringing things before the council. And we appreciate the impact you've had on the organization. And former councilmember Eddie Cook's comments, our Lean Sigma program, and Nita De Castro, who is just in high demand within the organization. within the organization to help us look at processes and find gaps, and streamline and create greater efficiencies. You were a big part of that, and we are very appreciative of it, and appreciative of the sacrifice of your time, and that of your family and your children, because it is a big commitment for most people that have never served in office or spent much time to understand the responsibilities of a council member. They are significant, and especially in a community of this size. I also wanted to say, I was going to bring tonight, and I will bring it by your house sometime, I know that you did not believe that we could ever build anything for less than $300 a square foot, or do anything for less than $300 a square foot. I did find some licorice for $1.99 per square foot, and I got you some just to prove that we could do something cheaper than $300 a square foot. So I will bring that by your house sometime. But thank you for everything over the previous eight years, and please let us know how we can help you into the future.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I can't believe that you and Mayor Lewis didn't teach them the nuances of church ball before you played them, Jared.
We tried. It was a good sport.
I don't think church was in service during those games.
You have to attend one of those to appreciate that. Chris will fill you in. Thank you, Jared. We're going to move on to item 20 on our agenda, which is a report from any council member on boards, commissions, and committee assignments. Any reports? Seeing none, let's move on.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Could we take a vote on that resolution?
Oh, that's right. We do need to take a vote on that.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution of appreciation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Please vote.
Aye.
Item passes, item 19. There are no policy items, no future meeting items, communications from the town manager?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Just a couple tonight. I wanted to extend additional appreciation. Yesterday, we held the groundbreaking for the Lindsay Road Interchange Project, something that was almost a decade in the making, and innumerable partners, external and internal, mayors, council members, who all played a part in making that happen. But I wanted to recognize a couple who really were instrumental in getting this across the goal line, so to speak, for us through the years. And one of those would be Leah Hubbard Reinhimer. She actually was our Intergovernmental Affairs Director when this project first started, and was an invaluable champion for the project in helping us go work through the processes at MAG, as well as ADOT and Federal Highway to make this happen. David Fabiano, who joined us about midway through this, but was extremely helpful in our dealings with RWCD, as well as procurement of our contractors, and the project itself, along with Susanna Struble and CIP. And then lastly, Chris Payne in Legal, who was very helpful with a lot of the documents that needed to be put in place. It'll be a tremendous asset for our community, as was highlighted at the groundbreaking, but we couldn't have done it with some of those key players through the years, and that was a wonderful event yesterday. And then next, very shortly, we will be closing on the town's excess parcel on the 202, shortly. And what we refer to as the Healey Land, because of the short-term lease Healey had on that property. But that was a very exhaustive process, multi-year in nature. Again, a lot of people who were instrumental in helping make that happen. Those proceeds that are north of $9.5 million will be rolled in to help pay for the cost of the public safety training facility, which we will be cutting the ribbon on very soon. But again, I want to highlight a couple individuals who were involved throughout the entire process, and we couldn't have got it done without them. First being Mary Goodman, who is one of our assistant town managers, Gal Mira is our Director of Community Development, and then John Baird in our legal department, who again, put in a lot of hours on a very complex process of selling land in Arizona and running a public auction, and helping to negotiate that final agreement. Couldn't have done it without them. Actually, also, Chris Payne, I would be remiss in not recognizing Chris as well. But two great projects that have recently come to fruition after many, many years of hard work. With that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Reports from council members. One thing from the mayor is, please take care of yourself. We've had several council members that have had a bout with COVID, including one right now that's dealing with it, Jared. And please take care of yourselves and watch your health. We're glad to have Councilmember Hendricks back and healthy after going through what he did. Stay healthy. Thank you. There's nothing else at this time. We will recess the regular meeting and reconvene in executive session. We need a motion and a second to do that, don't we? Could I get a motion to recess the regular meeting and reconvene in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Aye.
Did that show up? Vote again. There we go. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll see everyone upstairs.